I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford Common Council. All proper notices were sent. I'd like you to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present, except Alder Person Savage, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda is unanimous consent agenda. We have one item, the Common Council minutes of August 12th, 2025.
Move for approval.
You have a motion and a second?
Motion by Alder Person Rosniak, seconded by Alder Person Webb, approving the following items on the unanimous consent agenda, the Common Council minutes of August 12th, 2025.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And go down to item six on the agenda, appearances or citizen comments. Anyone wishing to appear? Second call, anyone wishing to appear? Third call. All right, item seven on the agenda, the mayor's report, I do not have anything tonight. Item eight on the agenda is aldermanic request, President Rosniak.
One item for Steve, property maintenance violations, when are we going to get that on the agenda?
We will have that at our next meeting.
Okay, at our next meeting, okay, because we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, so, thank you.
The key component to that is going to be just Jacob, and Jacob is out on medical leave right now.
Oh, okay. We can wait, that's it.
Alder Person Curly?
Yes, the Police and Fire Commission met August 20th and took the following actions. On the police side, they voted to create current eligibility lists for the positions of captain, lieutenant, sergeant, and patrol officer. Secondly, they received a letter from Chief Scott McFarland announcing his intent to retire February 20th, 2026. The six-month advance notice is to allow the commission sufficient time to secure a replacement and provide an orderly transition. On the fire rescue squad side, the commission voted to create a current eligibility list for full-time positions and to confirm Chief Burghart's appointments of Bradley Jean from the current eligibility list to the full-time position firefighter slash EMT, left open by the departure of Patrick Blazing for West Bend, and also voted to confirm Chief Burghart's appointment of Erica Dominique from the eligibility list for the full-time position of firefighter/paramedic, subject to successful completion of all pre-hire conditions on or after September 1st.
Thanks Dean.
Sure.
Alder Person Walvogel?
No requests this evening, Mayor.
Alder Person Garza?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Turchi?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Webb?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Kohler?
Yeah, I got two things. I had two calls from two different constituents about two different complaints. One, we did have them call Julie, logged a complaint, it's about the loud noises after 6 o'clock over at the Ritek Building, so I believe that would be taken care of, so any of our vast audience who lives in District 1 up in that area, we should get some resolution on that rather quickly. But what I wanted to bring up to all of us, because I don't think this is only a problem we have in District 1, but do we have, and I see the chief is here, I don't know if you can ask him the question, do we have an ordinance on how long a vehicle can be parked outside a residence before it has to be moved?
It can't be parked longer than 24 hours in one spot.
Okay, so I did have a resident who, and I don't believe, we are probably monitoring that very closely, is that true?
As we go through neighborhoods, sometimes they'll see it, sometimes they won't, depending upon the frequency which we get there.
Right, okay. So, yeah, so they had a complaint, this is on Union Street, they had a car that parked in front of their house that didn't belong there, obviously, and probably lives a couple blocks away, or a little bit away, but it was there for like four days. And I'm not sure if you guys have had the same thing, I figured we've had it, this is the first complaint I've heard. The car was there for about four days, it was kind of like, I think the neighbors are a couple doors down, I think they might be doing, you know, repair work or working on the cars. Long story short, they moved it one day, and the same day they put another car there for another four days. So I did the same thing, and I asked the resident to log in the complaint with Julie, and so chief, I don't know if you guys are going to get that one or not, but it will be, it's up on Union Street towards the Sherman's Funeral. One thing I did tell them was, you have to be a little patient, because of some of the work done on Fifth and Sixth Street down there, people were having some tough times parking, they realize that and recognize that, but, you know, so I told them I would bring it up and find out at least what the ordinance is, and then we'll see what we can do to move forward from there, so. That's all I had.
Thanks Joe.
Yep.
Alder Person Wilk?
Yeah, I just want to thank our administrator Steve Volkert, Chief Burghart, and Chief McFarland for their involvement in building relationships between the school districts. They spent some time on Monday morning with Joint One School District, and I believe Steve said they were at HHS earlier, so I think it's really important that the city is taking those efforts to build and strengthen those relationships with our students and that part of our community, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. All right, so then we go to item 10 on the agenda, resolutions. We have resolution number 3743, a resolution to approve the bid for the City Hall retaining wall improvements. Steve, is this you? Or no, Chris?
Chris will take this one. Yeah, good evening, so this is a project that's part of our 25 CIP budget, located directly outside City Hall, outside this room here between the building and Rubicon River. Project was designed by Stantik Engineering, it involves several different components of rehabilitation of the wall and the infrastructure that's outside there, it's about 1,500 square feet of sheet piling, and it's a length of just over 100 lineal feet. This first photo on the screen there shows the existing sheet piling that is in the process of failing, along with largely the remainder of that embankment. There's some stacked stone that's right next to that, and some riprap as well, that's in need of replacement. Fortunately, the concrete retaining wall that's up butts the Main Street Bridge there is in good shape, there's a crack there that you see in the foreground that need to be repaired, but it just requires some minor repair work. Above the wall, between the building, you can kind of see some photos of what it looks like currently. The path as it gets closer to Main Street has, you know, no pavement, there's a structure in there that needs to be removed. There's also two fire exits, those will be kept in place, but please note that these are secondary fire exits, and those have been confirmed by the city fire inspector and are not required as the primary per code. So, as I mentioned, the improvements include new sheet piling, rerouting of the existing building downspouts, which I think are shown here in this photo here, those need to be buried and discharged within the wall itself, so they're not undermining the backside of the wall. And essentially, we just, you know, had this project on our schedule, put it out to bid, bids were received on July 10th. Just a couple other photos of the failing ground out there. Bids were received on July 10th, we did receive two bids, always nice to get more than that, but as a specialized project, we did, you know, feel like we received fairly competitive bids. However, our budget for this project was around 412,000, so we did have a series of meetings following the bid with the design engineer and the contractor to work toward minimizing the scope of the overall project without compromising the integrity and intent of the project itself. So following the scope evaluations and negotiations with Terra Engineering, we were able to get down to 417,000, just over that, and staff is recommending an execution of a contract with Terra Engineering for the adjusted bid amount as shown. And if approved as presented, we would have the contractor provide a change order to make adjustment to the original bid, and with that, I can take any questions that you have.
I just had one, did they have like a guarantee for their work, how long this will last?
There's, with the wall itself, it's, so the existing retaining wall or sheet piling is going to be staying in place, because removing that would cause quite a failure, and so the general practice is to have that wall put in place, and then there's folable fill that fills the gaps in between. I don't believe there's a, you know, written like, one-year warranty is standard in general construction practices, but there's not a five-to-10-year warranty, you know, on the work, just in writing somewhere, to my knowledge, but I can check into that, but, you know, it's something that we feel confident that this is going to last a long time, and the investment of the, you know, of this project is essentially, you know, the building isn't in any kind of structural danger, it's just shoring up that embankment and the, you know, the path that's above it. So, to answer your question, I don't believe there's a, you know, a long-term guarantee with the project.
Okay. Obviously, if we're spending this kind of money, though, I hope it would last a while so we don't have to do it again anytime soon, so.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, the design, you know, just like pipe in the ground, right, we save a design life of, you know, expected per industry standards is, you know, a certain number of years for, you know, whether it's water main, you know, concrete pavement, so I can get back to you on what that is looking like for this type of a project. My guess would be, you know, 25 to 30 years or beyond, for sure, so I can find out and let you know.
Yeah, if you can find all more information, great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It should be made clear, too, is that this wall, this walkway is not meant for the general public to be using, this is merely as an emergency exit and a buffer between this building and the water itself, so that's the reason that if someone says, why isn't the railings there, or why is there, or why are we not having ADA compliant stairway to get out of this doorway? Again, that's not necessary, because again, it's not meant for a normal, you know, travel for anyone to be, so.
Thanks for that clarification.
Dean?
What was in the original bid that they felt was necessary to propose that was taken out to bring the cost down?
Sure.
And will we end up having to see that later on?
So, yeah, good question, and we, so one of the items was a stainless steel railing, and, you know, there's galvanized railings, there's different, you know, levels of that, and we kind of looked at it and said, if we, you know, because it does dead-end at the bridge, it's not a through street, or, I mean, really, it's never been intended for public foot traffic, so our intent is to put up signage such that, you know, authorized personnel only, and, you know, it's just, you know, demonstrating that it's not for, you know, public traffic back there with foot, so then we wouldn't have a need for the railing, so we could get, that was one big one that was eliminated. Concrete pavement of the entire area back there, we said, originally that was in there, do we need that, you know, can we put a crushed stone base, that's something that our public works can maintain? You know, the big cost is like a mobilization to, you know, feasibly do the logistics of installation back there, so getting concrete pumped back there is quite a process to that location, so we did remove the concrete on this project as well, and there were some other ancillary components that, you know, I can certainly provide, but those were the two big ones, the railing and the concrete that were taken.
So we won't have to look at funding those in the future?
No, it's, again, it's not a, you know, not being a safety issue, and not being a, you know, a paved path is not something that we would have to come back and say, oh, we need this for sure, so.
Okay, thank you. Wayne?
Chris, when we looked at this last year, didn't we talk about underneath the bridge we'd have to reline that, was that not necessary now?
So that's kind of a separate project that I'm still working on, that's, you know...
So it may have to be done?
That part of it is still, still needs to be done, and I'm working with the county on that, and they came and actually did some investigation on, you know, what that looks like for us, and we got information out to some contractors, again, a real, you know, specialized bid, I mean, they said we could do, you know, a spray in there and just cover up, you know, everything and make it solid, but that's a separate project, and again, we have to have discussions about what do we want that to look like, I don't want to take away the historical, you know, aspects of that, of that, you know, even being under the river that, you know, not a large population of people see, but still, it's a big part of, you know, the history of the city, and we don't want to do anything, you know, too intrusive with that. So, answer your question, it is a separate project, we still are working on getting that tuck-pointed, getting it repaired under that bridge, that's still going to be done, it just won't be part of this retaining wall project.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thanks Chris. You have this in front of you, do I have a motion?
I'm moving.
Second.
Curly, seconded by Turchi. Jessica?
Motion by Alder Person Curly, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3743.
All right, any final discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Onto item 12, the city administrators' report, first item is the discussion and consideration of approving the allocation of the bid security for the 2025 asphalt paving program, Steve?
So, yeah, sorry, this is me again, so at the council meeting two weeks ago, the council approved to withdraw the original low bid of the 2025 asphalt paving program, and then award it to the next low bid, Wolf Paving, and as part of that bid withdrawal, the city is entitled to 5% bid security from the original low bidder in the amount of just over $35,000. This item before you today is to take action on how exactly council wants to allocate these funds. I'm recommending to utilize $18,230.86 to cover the gap from the original low bid to the next low bid, as outlined in the executive summary, and then return the remaining $16,700 to the original low bidder. And the two primary reasons for that are, one, to show good faith and promote a continued competitive bidding environment, and, you know, not try to, you know, extricate contractors and show that we are, you know, in the business of doing that, because we're really not, and, you know, one is, the terms of returning the balance would include a requirement that the contractor would have to sign a cancellation and mutual release form to ensure no legal action is pursued against the city, so in doing so, we feel like we would be protected, but again, we're bringing this before council to allow that decision to be made in your hands, and just as, yeah, to, you know, allow that decision to be made, because that request was brought up by Alder Person Turchi at the last meeting, so we're doing that today.
All right, thanks Chris. Any discussion by council?
I appreciate bringing this back to the council, for one. So, I guess I was the one that initiated us to have this conversation, because when we voted on this last time, I think we voted with like a stipulation of that we were just voting on awarding the bid, not the allocation thereof of...
Right, leaving it to staff discretion, I believe.
Yeah, right, so we thought, so we thought we'd bring that up again. I'm still in favor of holding back the money, because it's part of the contractual agreement that we have, right?
Correct.
I didn't know that there's any circumstances that there would be legal action, right? I, you know, that sounds a little curious to me, right, because they were in default of awarding the bid, right, they ran out of time?
Correct.
So therefore, they... They gave up any right to actually, right, be awarded the bid, so that's my stance on it, we should retain all $35,000-something dollars.
Alder Person Kohler?
Yeah, I bring it up once again, one of my jobs is really obviously supplier contracting millions-of-dollar contracts to a couple hundred thousand to $50,000 contracts. You know, and a contract really comes down to just that, you're doing a contract, you come to the terms of the agreement to the contract, and you're supposed to hold up your side of it, and they hold up their side of it, and, you know, this is kind of how I want to look at it, I get being a nice, being a nice person and turning it back, you know, it does, to some extent, set a precedence, you know, for us, but, again, I mean, what it does tell people is that, well, we put a contract together, but you know what, we're going to waive this part, we'll waive this part, we'll waive this part, so it gives the impression that we could be a little loosey-goosey with some of our contracts, where I feel, you know, to the strength of the law of the contract, we should hold to it. And if that's what we said, and we retain that money, then we retain that money, they knew going into it that we would retain it, and they're the one that opted not to follow our contract, or follow the agreement that we both did, it's just like a handshake, right? Unfortunately, if it was a handshake, it might have been a little bit different, but because we have it in writing, and this is a standard in all of our contracts, and bids and so on and so forth, I will have to, at this point, favor the side of retaining the money, making the sincere apologies to the supplier that he did not fulfill, and this is why, but we need to follow through. And that's my stance.
Justin?
I mean, I wasn't here for that meeting, so first I'm coming in a little blind, but I kind of come out on the other side, honestly, like, I think we, if our goal was to bid something and to actually like operate on the contract and like, you know, proceed, like, we're covering the change in funds that we've had to pay for the next bid, and we're taking that out of it, and then we're giving back the money, we're doing that all at our option, we have no like, we have no obligation to do it, we're making a choice to do it, and so I don't think it actually like binds us for any future action, and if you're saying that they're going to sign a release that effectively says we would waive any like potential like claim against us, I think that actually like provides us cover. Like, I doubt they would like initiate a legal action over $30,000, like, it's probably unlikely, because it will cost them more to file it and litigate it than it would be to just let the money go away, but I don't feel like particularly strongly, but I also think if we ever want to do business with this contractor in the future, I think like operating in good faith means that we'll potentially get another bid from them if we want to use them in the future, and I guess it depends on how good of a relationship we have with them and how much we want them to do work in the future.
Thanks, Justin. Dean?
Anytime you've ever had to pay a late fee on, whether it's a car loan or anything else, you look back, in the contract, there is a stipulation that a late fee will apply. You can grumble about it if you don't get your payment in on time, but you still end up having to pay it, there's no difference here. They knew the rules and the regulations that were set forth when they put in their bid, they didn't meet them, and this is the price they're going to pay.
Wayne?
Chris, sir, Steve, refresher memory, Kirchner Brothers, have we done work in the past, have they bid on a lot of projects, are they hopefully going to continue to bid on projects?
So, yeah, good question, Karteshna Brothers was a sub on the East Wisconsin 5600 project, and they were the primary bidder on the contracting question. They also were a sub on a project last year that, my understanding, went fine, the East Wisconsin 5600 project had some concerns that, with workmanship, that myself and my staff, you know, felt was, you know, not up to par with some industry standards, and, you know, just as a refresher for Alder Person Webb and anybody else that doesn't quite recall, but essentially, it was, they had to return the notice, the contract signed within 10 days, and it was two months, something like that, you know, it just wasn't in meeting that timeframe, essentially, so we leaned on that contract language to, you know, go to the next low bidder. So, with Karteshna Brothers, you know, in Wisconsin, Southeast Wisconsin, there's essentially Wolf Paving, Paint and Dolan, Stark Asphalt, and then it gets to be a lot of smaller contractors, Karteshna Brothers is in that next tier or right on the fringe, so we always want to promote a competitive environment and have, you know, the more bids, the better, but we want the quality to be a, you know, a high level as well, so they have done some work in Hartford in the past, and then just this recent project was...
So what was their reason for coming in so late?
They didn't, they, you know, owned up to it and said, hey, we just, we just made a mistake, we, I think it was signed in June, so they had time to return it, and they just, it just sat on the desk and wasn't, you know, got missed, you know, that was, there was never a real excuse that I, you know, heard that was real valid, and I have not heard from them since our last meeting.
Joe?
I think there's enough said there.
Yeah.
Chad wants to...
Right.
Chad?
Just a follow-up question, you said there was another project where there were some quality concerns, did they rectify those concerns, or how was that issue settled or resolved?
I mean, one example was where their asphalt pit was, was further away, and they, we had to reject one of the loads because it didn't meet temperature, it basically had cooled off too much, and they, you know, they weren't real thrilled that they had to do that, but our inspector was on site and said, nope, this doesn't meet, you know, ABC standards for temperature, and it's got to be rejected. And then some of the, just some of the finishing with the rolling and the finishment work was suspect, and it was, some of those things are really hard to come back and correct once it's done, and it's cured, so, not that they wouldn't be willing to, but it just wasn't fitting that mold of like that they can come back and fix it and make it right, so.
Thank you. Alder Person Wilk?
To me, the issue of the past work that wasn't great quality is a separate issue than this one, I feel like it's very convoluted to try and discuss both of those at the same time. For the late fee comment, I just have to say that I certainly have been late on things before, and I will tell you that I've fought those late fees many times, and about half the time, I don't have to pay them, and I'm given a pass occasionally. And the last thing I guess I'll say is, if we were proposing here to give all the money back and not charge them for any of it, I would not be in favor of that. They did make an error, I think we need to recover the funds that we now are lost, because we have to go to a higher bid. But secondly, we are a city, we are here representing a city of people, we're in the business of people, the business of people is one in which you need to build relationships and foster them, and I think that by not doing it, we could potentially be hurting a relationship that could benefit us in the future, so I would be one to go along with a proposal here by the city.
Well, I tend to agree with contractual obligations. In your comments from our last meeting, that this is one of the first times this has happened in, I don't know how many years, that I think it's almost a special circumstance by itself, and I tend to agree with Justin's comments that, and Aaron as well, that I think he came up with a good compromise here. Hey, we're recovering the difference between the two, and, you know, showing some leniency and returning the rest, as opposed to pocketing it, so that's where I would sit on this.
Dennis?
Wayne?
Well, if some of you feel that giving them $17,000 back is too much, can we consider giving them $10,000 and say, hey, guys, you screwed up, this is the best we can do for you? You know, that's another option, instead of giving them the whole 16, well, $17,000, or we keep 35, I mean, that's a little too much, I think, so give that some consideration. Give them $10,000 and say, sorry, guys, you screwed up.
I just was with the math, this is covering the difference, so that's all we're doing.
Mine's better math. Mine's better.
I think we should move on this. So let's vote...
As proposed?
Yeah, we should, yeah, I'm not going to propose it, I think we should...
Motion to approve as proposed.
Second.
You're approving the what?
What's been put in front of us by the city.
17 or 16?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jessica?
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Wilk, approving the allocation of the bid security for the 2025 asphalt paving program.
Can we do a roll call? Because I gotta think we're gonna have numerous, numerous answers.
Sure.
Yes or no? You don't have one.
But before we do that, any final comments or discussion?
Yeah, just one quick comment. Then why do we have this in the contract? Thanks.
All right. So a roll call vote was requested. Jessica?
You start calling out names.
Okay.
Elder Person Wilk?
Aye. Elder Person Kohler?
Nay.
Elder Person Turchi?
Nay.
Elder Person Waldbogle?
Aye.
Elder Person Rosniak?
Aye.
Elder Person Curley?
No.
Elder Person Garza?
No.
Elder Person Webb?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mary, you have your first vote.
Aye.
So a motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the second quarter 2025 general fund results. Okay, so again, every quarter, we come back to you and just let you know where we are financially for primarily Fund 100. That's your general fund. As of the end of the second quarter, the city is at forty-three point two-one percent of the budgeted general fund revenues. Again, this is right in line with the average of the prior six years, which is at forty-two percent. The total general fund expenses for the second quarter of the year was fifty-three percent. This is about eight percent higher than the average of the last six years. Forty-five point nine-eight percent is the average. Again, department heads were asked to look through every line item that again is either at a hundred percent or higher. On occasions, we've had where individuals had situations in which the encumbered amount was being captured along with it under the budget showing as already paid. So in other words, in essence, the encumbered amount has to be pulled from that already paid. In that situation, again, we had on three occasions where the encumbered amount again was double counted. So because of that, those, those will be back to average. There are considerable amount of costs which again were paid all upfront. One example of that is our salt, which again did go up in cost. But the salt for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six winter has already been purchased for the entire year. So we will have no additional costs on that. So again, each department head that has anything that's over a normal expected amount is asked to give an explanation as to why it is above the normal. And again, they have done so for this quarter. So we believe once, once we have a couple of these encumbered expenses taken off the budget in the second quarter, for the second quarter, we'll be back into the normal range of that forty-two to forty-eight percent. Any questions about the quarterly report? Thanks for addressing that, Steve. What's that? Thank you for addressing that. You're welcome. Anyone else? Then we are on to item C under the city administrator's report, discussion and consideration of the 2026 to 2030 CIP budget. Okay. So the big reason that you're here tonight besides giving back the money. The capital improvement plan again is a five-year plan. It is forecasted based on, again, their existing numbers and costs as they are coming in at the current time. The real big part to this, for those who are new, is you're looking really so much at the first two years. The reason being is every two years, we go out for a bonding. So we borrow every two years for capital items for the next two years. So it's always the even years. So twenty-six, we'll go off for bonding for twenty-six and twenty-seven expenses. And twenty-eight, we'll do it again for twenty-eight, twenty-nine. One thing to keep in mind is that your first payment on any bonding doesn't come up till the following year. Okay? And you'll, you'll see why, how that, how that runs out when we show you the other sheets. So this capital budget has three big things to it. First of all, our normal everyday costs that we normally do, including we do road reconstruction, normally to two streets a year, those costs are seeing a decent amount of escalation in cost. And Chris will talk about that in a second. The second big item on here is a twenty-year borrowing for the firehouse. The firehouse originally was budgeted and thought of as being about a two-point-four million dollar investment. Now that we have gotten much further into the planning stages, that has gone up quite considerably. The second, the third item is a new proposal for a parks building. It's actually has three, three purposes. One is to actually house the parks department. The second one is to have an impound area inside. Right now, it's on the outside. And the third one is to house weatherization. Weatherization is a part of our Community Development Authority program. Again, remember, the Community Development Authority is a federally and state-funded program, which again helps individuals low to moderate income. So let me go back. The first item again has to do with our cost for new construction projects and again, road reconstruction. And Chris is gonna kind of talk a little bit about what we've seen in our most recent bidding.
Thank you. Just to explain just briefly about the infrastructure improvements, there was a, a slide from, that I had on here, and I must not have made it on here, but apologize. But essentially DOT put out a graph that, that shows that the inflation for construction is outpacing the inflation for overall in the U.S. and Wisconsin. So there's, you know, the spike with COVID and, and everything else in supply chain. And it's settled a little bit, but it continues to increase. So we are not immune to that in Hartford here. The, the construction costs are obviously going, you know, going up. And we anticipate about an eight to 10% increase for these projects for the next few years. This graphic here shows all of our public infrastructure, including the average prices for, unit prices for storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water main, roadway. And the roadway includes pavement, curb and gutter, sidewalk, lawn restoration, etc. But as you can see, we have an average unit price from actual bids in 2022 to 25, and then a second line with projected increase for 26 to 27, and the respective percent increase for those. So as I mentioned, overall, we anticipate an average increase of about eight to 10% for replacing this infrastructure and have budgeted accordingly for upcoming projects. So we, I, you know, we're in the same situation as every other community in the county, in the region, and state and beyond. But I assure you that we will continue to plan and design efficiently to mitigate risks and unnecessary costs to protect the investments of the city. So with that, I can take any questions that you have.
So again, as a reminder and information for our newer members, every year, the city looks at two roads to do total reconstruction. Total reconstruction actually looks at the roads that basically have infrastructure problems. Either the water main has had many faults, many water main breaks, things like that. And we're patching, and we're patching, and we're patching. And before you know it, it's, it's all patchwork. It looks like a Partridge Family bust. But anyways, the next one is also water mains can be undersized. The D and I would like to see all of the water mains increased in size. Right now, some water mains can be as small as four inches. And that's for a main. So again, increasing those sizes. The other way, other issues you could have underground include the stormwater. If, again, there's stormwater leakage or other items with stormwater not flowing to the outlet. Again, that's an area in which we are improving on. And finally, and, and another issue, of course, is sewer. Sewer mains, along with laterals, can have a lot of issues with cracks. One of the major reasons for cracks is the shifting in the ground underneath. It's also the fact of tree, tree roots that can actually go through those and, and cause blockages. Now, of course, the city does an enormous amount of maintenance of all of our storm mains, or I should say our sewer mains. But again, these are items that again will be cleaned up once those sewer mains are replaced. The other thing it does, along with the total reconstruction, is you're looking at increasing and proving the curb, the aprons to the driveways, the terrace areas, the sidewalk if needed, and then of course, the pavement on top. Pavement is of course based on a PESR rating. PESR is the international means by which we rate street conditions. So it can be anywhere from a one up to a 10. 10 is brand new. Our average right now in the city of Hartford is probably about a six, which is pretty average for communities of our size, is having a six. It's, it's relatively favorable. But again, all those things will get changed, much like you saw this year with Fifth Sixth in Wisconsin. Again, all those roads are brand new. The curb and gutter is brand new. All the infrastructure underneath is brand new. This will actually improve curb appeal also to those homes in that area. So again, every year, we try to do two of those roads. And then we also take a look at those roads, which again, don't need infrastructure issues, but they just need their, the surface to be redone. And that's when we do our, again, our road surface repair, which again, you've approved in the past. That's again, my, basically a mill and overlay in which you're milling off two inches or more. And then you're again rerunning the new, the, the road again. A good example of that is Rural Street we did last year. You probably remember, from State Street over to Highway 60. So that's a good idea and a good example of a mill and overlay as a part of pavement maintenance. So that's the information again on road maintenance. Any questions regarding the cost increase projected? I'm gonna skip to the next item. And that has to do with the, with the firehouse. And Tony and members of his staff are here to talk about firehouse number two. Thank you, Chris.
Oh, yep, you got her. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me out tonight. Appreciate it. So as Administrator Volker had mentioned, I have an update for you on where our costs are, where the projected cost originally was, and working with the design company, what we have determined where we need to be. So a little bit of history, when Chief Stevens was working on proposing a new firehouse, a satellite fire station, that CIP that was built was estimated at two-point-four million dollars with a cost of building approximately a three-hundred dollars per square foot. That was not all-inclusive, and I'm gonna get to that, but that was just the cost of building. So with working with the information that Chief Stevens had gathered that had left for me, and a little bit of information I had with the consultant that he was working with, that's how they determined where they were. The current estimate, where Assistant Chief Semler and Deputy Chief Worth and myself had worked to be, we can't get that cost to be underneath four-point-nine million dollars. Now, the difference, I'm gonna show you where this is not equal to where the original CIP was, because this is an all-inclusive cost. This is including the furnishings, the, the chairs, the tables, everything in the kitchen, the bathrooms is in this cost. The cost of utilities, of putting water and sewer and storm sewer, everything to the building is in this cost. Again, the original did not. So here's just a generic, general cost per square foot increase that we've seen, is trying to track for you, where is the cost of building gone? And it's, it's pretty linear. And you can see roughly in 2025, the average is about four-hundred dollars per square foot. So when that three-hundred was estimated in 2021, it was right on par with what the time was. So it was a completely appropriate cost of building at that time. The estimates that were done going forward, again, just didn't quite catch up to what this scale was, estimating where it was gonna go in the future, nor what the furnishings were going to be at the time. We're gonna come back to this if we ever have questions on what could it be if we had to push it off a year or two. We took some information from our design consultant, Five Bugles, that had done some recent work and said, what can we do to reduce the costs of what our proposals are? Here's a big list of some of the, the recent work they've done, dating back to, the latest one here was 2009, or the, the earliest was 2009, up to some jobs that are built but not yet built. So you can see the dollars per square foot are rising linearly like that original chart showed, but the big changes are the construction type. So a masonry or a stick-built building are much more expensive than the pre-engineered metal buildings. So what the three chiefs, we had decided was let's go the most cost-effective route and look at the pre-engineered metal building. What does that mean? I'm gonna show you some pictures. But in your mind, if you want a quick picture, think a metal pole barn, right? It is pre-engineered, designed and engineered one way and then built on site with those specifications. So the two most recent construction jobs that Five Bugles had completed was one firehouse in Harrington, Wisconsin. Sorry, the bid for it, not completed. The biz just came back in a number of weeks ago. So three ninety-two a square foot for that pre-engineered in Harrington, and then four-ten a square foot in Union Grove. Harrington did have a few extra adds, which made it higher. But what are we proposing? What are we asking for here? So I tried to give you an estimate on what if we can't afford this? Administrator Volker had asked, what if we can't pull it off? What if we need to look at pushing this in the future? What does that look like? Here's that data. So by just pushing into 2029, the second line says a 2029 bid opening. That estimate, from what I had, that four-point-nine million dollars would be approximately five-point-five million. If we pushed it to a bid opening in 2031, the estimate would be just a little bit over six million. So as, as same as Chris had been estimating with the cost of inflation not meeting up with the cost of construction inflation, the scale just goes up. So those are some of the estimates on where it would be if we needed to push off or we decided to push off. That would be the negative or the downside of doing so. So this is the breakout that I wanted to show to you, what wasn't originally included versus what we are including here. So the site acquisition was already handled, right? The city took care of acquiring a beautiful piece of land. That one's handled. That's why that one is at a zero. The building construction costs, that's where you're gonna see that base bid of three-point-eight million dollars. The cost per square foot, we did work all the way down to three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a square foot, much below what that original line graph was showing, trying to be as aggressive as they possibly could be on just the cost of construction itself. The alternate bid, that second column that you're seeing, is for a fourth apparatus bay. So with the base bid in this one, it's three apparatus bays that are double deep, what you commonly refer to as a pole-through bay. So six apparatus bays, three facing north, three facing south. The alternate adds an additional bay. So the base bid fits everything that we need now. The alternate would be, what if we had just a little bit more space to bring in that Survive Live trailer that currently is parked outside, and then one additional trailer to get moved over that's wedged in a double bay right now. So then moving down furnitures, fixtures and equipment, roughly two-hundred thousand dollars there. Communications and technology, all the audiovisual equipment, everything that Tiffany would help us out with install and implementing about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. The professional fees in legal are, is another, a little bit over half a million dollars of what it takes to get utilities out there. So power, gas, fiber, whatever else we need to make that building functional. And when you add all of that up at the end, that's how we get just shy of four-point-nine million dollars. So what I want to do is just kind of give you a little bit of visual concept. We're not married to this, but the, the three of us have a pretty solid concept of where we need to be. During one of our meetings, we had a wants and needs assessment. And you can imagine that the needs have to be cut from the wants to make this number as aggressive as it possibly can be. So that shading that you're gonna see on the far right or the east side of this picture, it's in that slightly pink color, that's that alternate bid. So only if we could find the extra almost six-hundred thousand dollars to build it, that's why that area shaded, so that we're making that, hey, if, if we really need to cut down, that would be the one to cut out. So what were we really looking for? Five dorm rooms, the office area for them, for the employees to work out of, in-office space for my Assistant Chief and Deputy Chief to specifically work out of, because we'll be probably moving completely out of the EMS building across the street. Administrator Volker would have some future- Administrator Volker would have some future plans for where that building would be going in the future. Mechanical space, and then, our decon area. So when we have our turnout gear coming back from structure fires, one of the biggest pieces you need to be aware of is cancer prevention, so having a space to safely doff it, wash it, get it cleaned back into service, that's what that center blue area is there. And then, the mechanical room. The cost in the original proposal that Chief Stevens had was for a, I'll call it a mezzanine. So to put that, all the mechanicals up onto a second level that would hang over the apparatus bay. Easy to do in a masonry building, not so easy in a pre-engineered building. If we go pre-engineered, it significantly increases the cost of engineering, because it's not pre-engineered anymore, to have a mezzanine into it, and it was not cost-effective anymore. We'd be cheaper off just building masonry at that point. Here's the site that is currently at Highway K and Shower Drive, just approximately how it would fit on there, just the bare minimum of some parking stalls for all of our responders coming in, a few spots for the citizens, the public to come in and visit us, and then, the turnaround spots for all of our apparatus responding out to Shower Drive on the east side, or what would be the north side of that. Again, we're not married to these, but I wanted to give you some visual enticement. What could it look like, right? Why could this fire station possibly be? Just some examples of what the roof pitch or the building profile may look like compared to some recent fire stations that have been built. So one example here, compared to a cantilevered building with extra light, it's just the complete opposite of our current firehouse, where it's dark and dungeon-esque. This one would be completely opposite with windows and sunlight coming inside, which would be amazing. So just something to whet your whistle on what this possibly could be. What questions do you have for me?
Well, I don't like your numbers. Paul Stevens had better numbers. Okay? But $4.9 million is a lot of money. But you guys know what you want. We know what you need. If it were for us to say, that's too much money, you can't do it, if we wait another year, it could be $5.9 million, according to your chart.
Another two years, correct.
So, much as we don't like to see $4.9 million spent, this is probably the best investment we're going to make in 20 years. So I go along with what you guys want, and I'll support $4.9.
Just a question. You made the comment that you would probably move most of the offices over to this other location and vacate this building. I was under the impression originally that there were going to be two firehouses that would operate to better serve the broadening area of Hartford, so.
Yes, absolutely. Good clarification question. What I meant by moving out of the offices would be the EMS building. So the fire station, as it is now, will completely stay intact the way it is. Assistant Chief and Deputy Chief, along with all of our EMS supplies, and our dayroom is across the street in that EMS building, the old utilities building, correct? That is wedge-shaped to fit along the railroad tracks. We would be vacating out of that space.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that.
Yes.
I know you like, this bid is like $4.9, and it's sort of like the pole barn kind of thing. Like, what percentage increase in cost would it be if it was masonry for that square footage?
Excellent question. I believe, I cut that slide out, I apologize. So roughly, the cost, going off the top of my head, to go from a pre-engineered building to a full masonry building, or a combination of masonry and, whether it be steel stud or wood stud, was approximately $150 per square foot more over the pre-engineered building. It was, it was fairly significant. The combination was less. So if you wanted to go both, maybe pre-engineered for the apparatus bay, but then, masonry for the, what I'll call the office side and the dorms and that portion of the building, that was approximately $70 to $90 a square foot more.
One question I have is, what's the planning of staffing both of the facilities?
Excellent question. So the, the plan for what we originally had for staffing as well, looks like it's slightly changing. So the original plan to put three more full-time employees on was to hire one in 2025, which Alderman Curley had brought up, which is being done, hopefully being accepted and moving in in September, and then, two more to be hired in 2026. Right now, it looks like we're going to hire one in '26, and then, one in '27. So that would give us three full-time employees per shift, instead of the two current full-time employees per shift on 24-hour shifts.
Both facilities then, or just a single, combined?
It would be combined. So there'll be some alternate staffing that we'll have to figure out, that will have to change where they're running out of. So will it be staffing both firehouses? No, absolutely not. So we currently have 10 full-time employees. We have eight that work, sorry, seven that work rotating 24-hour shifts. That moves from seven to 10 by the time that we're done, but not enough to staff both firestations. Because we are a combination, we rely heavily upon our paid-on-call staff. So while one firehouse will be staffed primarily with our full-time and our part-time staff, the other, primarily the downtown station, the existing fire station, will be a heavy paid-on-call response.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tony, we talked one time about the possibility of a second, second floor. But that's all out? It's, it's all going to be on one floor?
For this proposal, that's correct. The, the cost of going vertical saves on land space if need be. So that's to be where the savings are when you want to go vertical. If the cost of site acquisition is just too high to get more, more acres, then it's more cost-effective to go vertical. In this case, because we have the land and there is no extra cost, it is less expensive to do the pre-engineered building and go out horizontally on a single floor.
$4.9, was that with the bump out, I guess I'm going to call it, your alternative or your addition?
That is without that cost. So, yeah, if we wanted to include that, yep, you have to add that $600,000 to that $4.9.
But building, building it, say, without, I'm going to call it the bump out right now, is that, is it going to be set up that if we need to or we want to, there's, it's set up to be added on at a later period of time?
It would, the answer is, it depends. And it would depend heavily upon which design we picked. So for this example, where we have this sloping roof that's running away from the apparatus bay, there wouldn't be enough roof space to do so. If we wanted to add on, this might be an option, where maybe a hip was put in at the end of the gable, that could be an option. The caution that they brought, the design company had brought to me, was that you have to follow that inflation scale, and the cost of adding on versus what it would originally been is way out of scale. So say it would cost $600,000 to add on the extra base space now. Let's say in three to five years, you wanted to put on that same space, this, it'll be well over a million dollars to put on that same space.
What is the, what's our, I mean, we're building this, obviously, for, for the reason that we need it, for the volume of business we're doing, right? So the question I'm going to ask is, building it, how long is that going to buy us time, right? Because that's really what it's coming down to. If you put the addition on or the bump out, and that's going to buy us some time at a cheaper cost, right, if we're going to do it, doing it now, but how much time is that buying us till that's probably not enough as well?
Great question. So do we need this firehouse to run out of today? No. Can we run out of where we are now, even though we're tight? Yes, absolutely. But we can see the cost of building going up, so we're just trying to do some preparation coming into the future for it. How much time will this buy? I'm hoping that this is at least a 50- to 60-year building, easily. And should we need another building, I don't think the city of Hartford itself would need an additional station for our call volume. I think it would go on one of our contracted municipalities, perhaps Town of Hartford or Town of Aaron, maybe going west into Dodge County would be an alternate location, but not the city's obligation for additional station.
So what about, I guess I'm looking for, what's the, what's the additional years we're going to get by, if we just build out that extra right off the bat? And see, that's what I'm saying is, you know, a lot of schools do it all the time. A lot of buildings do it, and you walk through and you got this new building, and then, you got a new building, you have problems in between, and so on and so forth. The question I have is, you do it all at once, what's that, what's that buying us in time for, we may not need it now, but, you know, in five years from now, we're going to need it, so we're going to be back to you guys asking for money, right?
Yeah, I would say it would be within that five-to-10-year picture, would be a possibility of, did we cut ourselves a little bit too tight?
And this may be a question more for Steve, and sorry, new to the process, right? So the question I anticipate that I'd get from my constituents is, how does this affect my property taxes? And I don't know that you'd know that, you know, right now, but.
Yeah, that's going to be another sheet that I'll show you in a short period of time.
Okay, thank you.
I know exactly how much you pay in tax, no, I'm just.
Anyone else?
As far as having this new location, once it's built, that will impact insurance costs, right, for businesses and possibly homeowners?
Yeah, so the, the biggest fat, cost factor especially for businesses would be your ISO score. So anything that is within a certain distance of a fire station, and also within a certain distance of a fire hydrant, so they'll significantly improve our response and our ISO score for anyone that is within that five-mile circle of this fire station. So especially anyone stretching east from Highway K, and then, north of south of there as well. And then, all the proposed buildings that would be occurring just to the east of here would be significant to have this response there as well.
Again, I'll remind you, this is a 25, I'm sorry, 26, 27 borrowing, so we'd be borrowing in '26 for a, again, your first payment wouldn't be due until 2027.
That's a 20-year bond issue?
I'm sorry?
A 20-year bond issue?
Yeah, so, I mean, historically, in the city of Hartford, when you've ever done a building project, you've normally done it, extended it out 20 years. Example, the expansion of this building, or the renovation of this building, 2014, 2015, the library, the rec center, those are the most recent ones I can think of, that, again, it was all 20-year borrowing. As you remember, the rec center was a 20, 2,000 building that we paid off in 2020.
If we were going to abandon or get rid of that building, is that, that EMS building, is that a good substitute for possibly the rec department with the garages they have and so on and so forth? Would that be, I'm just looking at an option in a way to kind of play with the money? And that's the first thing I thought of, because it's, we'll give them some storage area, but it'll give them some of the area for some of the trucks and stuff, too.
If I understood your question correctly, we, we have a long, a long lineup of people who are waiting to get into a garage. We have three engineering vehicles that are parked 24 hours days, seven days a week outside. We have additional needs in the park and rec area. Again, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a very short period of time. But, so, we have, we have quite a few needs. Police Department, we have three vehicles in the Police Department that are parked outside 24 hours a day. And, and the only people who like that are the mice who are getting into my wiring. But the, the point is, is that there's a lot of needs for that building once.
Right, and the only thing I'm saying is, here's an offset. If you have a building, instead of having to build and put stuff in, I mean, maybe not for the rec, I mean, thinking about impound yard and stuff like that, maybe not, but for some of the options that we already have in the CIP, you know, for, for some of that storage, that might be the, an offset, right, that we could show, instead of building something new and budgeting for it, we could repurpose that building and hence, I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to change what we're renting, what we're loaning, what it's going to do is, it's going to pull off stuff out of our CIP and dispend in our CIP. That's my thought here. Creative. I'm trying to be creative.
Any other questions?
And cheap, yes, you're right.
All right, if not, let's go into, I'm going to have Randy step up and talk about the, something that's new in the, in the five-year budget, which is a 2029 budgeted project, which would be a new park building. I don't want to steal any of Randy's thunder, because he's prepared this presentation for years on end. But, again, one of the things that I've heard about for the last 10 years plus is that the use, the current use of the city garage by a park, along with Public Works, is causing more of an issue with, again, having enough room to keep everything in, and also to be able to utilize all the machinery that's in there. So I'll let Randy handle it from here.
Good evening. Start off, as equipment and vehicle prices continue to rise, we want to ensure proper storage, along with providing a quality workspace as more and more projects are being kept in-house. Currently, the Parks and Streets Department share the Public Works building. During the summer months, vehicles need to be double-parked within the building, leaving only a driving alley through the garage, as seen in these photos here. The original break room is too small, and a garage stall was repurposed as a break lunchroom. As you see here, the Streets crew hosts their morning meetings in the area with tables and chairs. While this area is shared for lunch, the Parks crew morning meetings are held in the garage, where they sit on tailgates, use leftover chairs, or stand. That's the picture you see on the right there. Last year, the Parks crew was asked to move further into the garage as to not interrupt Streets while they're meeting, and all this has caused for staff to feel underappreciated. In the winter months, Parks must seek out other places to do work on projects such as sign staining, table repairs, as space within DPW garage is at a premium. For example, last winter, Dan Denteist in Wastewater was kind enough to let us borrow space within their garage to construct the, to begin construction of the West Side Park dugouts, so we had to do that offsite. Streets and Parks must store equipment at alternative sites, such as the airports, park shelters over the winter. Both departments store equipment outside year-round, leaving them outside in the elements. Weatherization is part of this project right now. Weatherization leases for $28,740 a year. This space includes workspace, storage, and office space.
For those that don't know where this building is, if you go right behind NGB's building and/or Red Apple Cafe, this building is right behind there.
The Police Department utilizes an outdoor impound. While somewhat secure within the DPW yard, it is still relatively accessible to the general public. PD would like to have a secure indoor impound, which a new building could provide. These are all departments that can benefit from an additional building.
The chief is here to talk a little bit about what they use the impound for and how often it is utilized.
Let me just say, I'm grateful that we were included in this project. It's not something I expected. However, this conversation has been going on since my predecessor, Chief Groves, has been here. One thing we've been looking for, so, the current outdoor impound, we store any vehicle that's been towed for parking complaints. For instance, you were talking before about code violations, those types of things, illegal parking, abandoned vehicles, those vehicles are put in there. Sometimes, we have evidentiary vehicles that we get, we keep those at the Police Department. We have one stall for those vehicles right now to pull in. We also use that for our squad cars. And Steve stole a little of my thunder when he talked about mice. We actually do have mice in the wintertime that loves building nests and chewing the cabling in the cars. They're parked near the river in the back. And so, we actually cleaned out a lost-and-found area that we had been using. We park one car in that area, and the other one in the impound when it's not being used. This would be the evidentiary part of the impound. It's all gated off, it's restricted access, but it only fits one vehicle, and what we'd like it to do is fit a squad car, so they're no longer damaged. We, we tend to store evidentiary vehicles long-term. I, I was talking with Captain Thickens before. I thought we still had a motorcycle that we took several months ago on a chase. But if we get another vehicle, we have to find a place to put it. And our only backup right now is a cold storage building, which is not secure. That's problematic for us when it comes to the integrity of our evidentiary system. We have to have something that is both secure, limited people can get to it, and that's inside. If something like that evidentiary is kept outside, there's a possibility that it could be, evidence could be destroyed as a result of elements, and/or what we experienced at the current impound, which is people that enter it and steal from the cars, damage the cars. Sometimes, I think it's the owners themselves that go in and try and get things out of the vehicles, but it's that access that we're trying to cut off and preserve some of those vehicles. We would still utilize this lot that we have now. It would be more for really damaged vehicles that had no evidentiary value, that we thought would probably be salvaged anyways. would probably be salvaged anyways. Sometimes we get trailers. I don't, I think, I don't know if we've got campers before, but I know we've had enclosed trailers before as well. So that will still be utilized for some of those things, but we do have a need to keep certain things indoors as it relates to evidence and some of the other vehicles. Vehicles that we do take in off the roads will be subject to a process if the owner doesn't come back and get them to auction, and so it's in the best interest of the city to keep those vehicles as nice and as undamaged as we can to get the most money at auction back. The code enforcement that we talked about before, just touched on, that's something that'll come back to this body. We're in the process of working on that right now. Obviously, Jacob is out, but we've already started on the police department's end. We have somebody assigned to that, and we're having internal discussions about that. When you do something like that, it means you're going to take more cars, more campers, more trailers, more things like that out of the community, and we'll need a place to put those while we work those issues out. And then the last thing I would mention is, when we do switch out squad cars, we need places to put the cars in between the couple of months that it takes to switch. It's nice to have a secure area where we can do that. Currently, we park them outside or we park them in the area where we take prisoners in, which isn't a real safe thing to do, but we do it anyways because we don't really have any more room to do it, because of course we have three vehicles parked outside. So space is pretty limited, this would afford us the ability to do that. And again, I'm extremely grateful that we've been considered as a part of this project. So is there any questions I can answer about that?
Thanks, Scott.
Oh, kind.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Justin.
Do, like, I understand the value of, like, having cars...
Justin?
Sorry, cars inside, sorry, I'm just going to lean back in my chair. Do other cities have impound lots that are, or impound garages that are indoors? And if so, like, how big are they?
That's a good question. That's something that we would have to explore. I don't think they're taking up as much room as you see in the DPW garage or even one complete side of it. So what we're talking about is something of a limited scope but allows us to keep those evidentiary vehicles in there. My thought is, you could keep six cars in there, maybe total, and a couple of those stalls would be secured enough to be able to have limited access so that nobody could get to the vehicles that we have in there for evidence, that are in there for processing. I'd have better information for you, you know, but we just haven't, we haven't explored that.
Yeah, I guess that was going to be my second question, which is like, if it's intended to be secure, like, I'm assuming you're going to keep the evidentiary stuff still at the police station, but if you have to secure it in a place where, like, Parks and Rec is also using it, how are you going to make sure that you can still maintain the chain of evidence?
Go ahead.
In a coming slide, Randy will show you what the layout of this whole thing is going to look like.
Yep.
Good?
Yes?
Thanks, Chief.
I can stick around if you need anything, but after the slide, I'll cover it. I'll pay, I can come back for questions after that.
Sounds good. So currently, we have this in the CIP for 2029, park shop, police impound, weatherization for a capital cost of $4.5 billion. This is $185 per square foot for the garage, fleet equipment area, and $200 per square foot for the office break staff area. I want to thank Chris, he did some legwork for us and got this rough estimate provided to us by Cedar Corp. for roughly $4.5 million. And this is based on what it would cost to replicate the current DPW garage with some enhancements. So that's what you see in front of you there. The total square footage for this would be 18,000 square feet. We do have a proposed site, Independence Park, the east entry. This is land obviously the city already owns. And here's, if you're not familiar with the area or Independence Park, here's an overview. Again, the blue area you see is the paved parking lot that took place last summer. The yellow is still the gravel parking lot area, which is proposed for future paving. And then in your upper right-hand corner, which is a grass hill area, that's where the proposed shop would be. And again, that would be approximately 200 feet long by 100 feet wide. And I did have engineering do a rough sketch of what this could look like on the inside per Aldo Person's web question. The police impound would be indoor as part of this, so this would have a special caged entry with security that only PD would have access to. So park staff, weatherization staff, we would not have access to that, so that would be a separate fenced-in area within this. What you see here on the left-hand side would be offices, break room, locker room, and then the weatherization areas that they need, cold storage, inventory, their offices. We have a walkway. When I was in Watertown, they had a fairly new DPW garage, and they had a, basically a sidewalk with a curb that was able to separate from the parking, which was nice. And these spots are accurate for, I believe Paul said they would fit a dump. Is that correct, Steve, from what you recollect?
I believe so.
So two overhead doors that should be able to drive through. And yeah, that's our, that's where we're at right now, so.
Any questions on this project, again, as slated for 2029? Aldo Person Volker.
Just a minor question, and I'm sorry if I missed it, the police impound section, how many square feet do we know roughly, or is that just a rough sketch?
That's just a rough sketch. You know, Chief would have to let us know precisely what he would want. You know, we haven't been able to do that legwork. You know, we're still in preliminary stages.
That's fine, just given the drawing. It didn't look like, like, even if you took that out, it would appear you would still build the same footprint.
Sure.
So, so I, from my perspective, then it probably becomes less of an, you know, less of an issue.
These are my rough ideas that I drew out in pencil, and engineering was kind enough to make some semblance of order of what I had.
Thank you.
Yes, Aldo Person Volker.
So this one, is this looking at, we're obviously going to be financing this one probably as well, so this would be in the, what, the 28, 29 borrowing period then?
Again, tentatively put in a 28, 29 borrowing. In this situation, because you're borrowing it by itself, it's a 20-year borrowing versus our normal 10-year borrowing of 28, you're actually doing the financing in '29 for this.
Okay. And in the, weatherization is still be doing the renting of the facility, is that what we're saying here, or is there, we're giving that to them then?
So what I understand, we'd be able to utilize those funds towards this facility.
So they would still be paying rent, so to speak?
More or less, yes.
Any other questions?
Just one. Is this site definite, or is it just because the city owns the land now that it's proposed as the site? I mean, it seems like it's quite a distance away from the, both the police department and, well, anybody in the parks department as well.
No, great question. This was a site we had identified within the city, a site big enough that would be able to house this. Some of the benefits to that site is, obviously with Independence Park being one of our larger parks, instead of driving from the DPW garage, you know, halfway across the city to get to that site, we're already there. We do a lot of work at Pleasant Hill Cemetery, which is also on the south side of 60. So those are two areas that we avoid, where we won't be able to, we won't have to cross Highway 60 or utilize Highway 60, yes. We will still have to cross it to get to Centennial and to Willowbrook Park and anything north of 60, but those are two major areas where we spend a lot of time doing our own work.
Okay.
Aldo Person Rosnyak.
I think it's a great site. We already own that land, it's wide open, there's not going to be a whole lot of excavating that'll have to be done, it's a perfect site, I think. The only catch is, you'll have to let the deer that frequent that area know that they got four years left, but they have to get out of there.
I probably have a couple of staff members that, that won't be a problem for.
It'll take care of that. Okay, good.
Any other questions? If not, let me go into three other areas regarding the budget. And the first one is, talk about some of the other items that are in your budget, which again, you've already seen. The main part to this budget is the executive summary, that's the first 10 pages of that, along with my executive summary, a written executive summary, which is a page and a half, and then the finances behind that, and we'll do the finances last. So again, the big items to talk about, the next two-year budget, again, total road reconstruction for Bud Street, Center Street, North Johnson Street, Pleasant Avenue, McKinley Avenue, and Whacker Drive, so quite a bit of work that'll be done there. Major resurfacing of Independence Avenue with a new rail intersection. Again, that was being paid for through grant, a grant application and grant funding, which we received. Just to add to that conversation, anytime that you do a road in which there is a rail crossing, like Independence has, they want you to now make it accessible to, again, block traffic in all four directions. When you do that, if we could do it for all of our intersections, we could actually petition to become a quiet community. So when you get that call, and you will get that call, of a person going, how do you, what are we going to do about the trains? I didn't know that there was trains in Hartford. And then you get that complaint, and we say, yes, we've had trains since the start of time. But anyways, what they require is for them to not blow their whistles, you have to become what they call a quiet community, that's only done if all of the intersections have this, in essence, setback area in which you have forearms controlling that intersection, and plus you have separation areas. Excuse me. In most of our intersections where we have trains, we don't have that option to do this, including Main Street, we don't have that setback enough unless we knock down a few buildings. So anyways, but again, in this situation, because the federal government is paying for this, they are helping also in paying for making that one of the correct intersections for a railroad track. Other items, again, major resurfacing, as we talked about, parked work truck and a van replacement is in the next two-year budget. Extensive work on Willowbrook Park courts and lighting. A rec center boiler replacement, again, remember the rec center is over 25 years old now. Continued rotation of squad cars. While this is in the CIP budget, it's not paid for through bonding, because we'd be bonding for 10 years on an item we only keep for three. So with that, those are actually paid for through your general fund, your taxes, your mill rate. We have a new fire engine to replace, replacing a fire engine, existing fire engine 1660 in here, a dump truck with plow and wing. Again, remember, in 2018, we started having issues with finding and being able to get them on time, so we wrote, signed three POs in 2018. One was for 2018, one was for 2020, and one was for 2022. I don't believe we've still gotten the one for 2022 yet, so again, still an issue. And then EMS equipment upgrade, and Tony has some information on the EMS upgrade that, again, was brought forward through an inspection of all of our existing equipment.
Boy, you're just full of good news, aren't you, Tony?
Nothing but good news. Absolutely. But it is good news because it's preventative-ish. All right, so Administrator Volker had mentioned, conducted a survey of all the equipment that we're using, and what do we use 85, 87% of the time is EMS equipment. Out of our roughly 23, 2400 calls a year that we're running, a good 17, 1800 of them are EMS involved. So the CIP proposal that I am asking to make would be to replace some equipment, I'm going to show you what it is, the overall cost of $414,415, but broken up equally over five years, so $82,883 a year. Administrator Volker asked all department heads to be creative, cheap, and make sure that we're doing the best that we can on cost for anything. So I'll explain a little bit how we got into this breakout. The first year of this proposal, I have it covered. So the Wisconsin Department of Health Services offers a FAP program, a Funding Assistance Program, and typically Hartford Fire and EMS receives anywhere in the ballpark of $5,000 to $9,000. This past year, we received $93,000 because of an access of ARPA funds that were left over and some other state dollars that were rolled back out. They can't promise it'll go forward, but if it does, I'm hoping to make another one of those years pushed up into, I've got it. So the first year handled, dollars are available, ready to move, so it'd be four years and it'd be paid out of it. So it's already looking one-fifth better. All right, what are we talking about equipment-wise? Cots, these are what the patients lay on. So it's like the bed on wheels that we load into the back of the ambulance. We currently have three of them, but only one is the newest version of what it is, and the oldest one from 2019, or sorry, the oldest one being 13 years old, has exceeded its service life that we can't find parts for it. So it's been pulled out of service, and the oldest ambulance has a loner cot that we're borrowing, because they cannot repair it. The power load system, so what those cots interface into in the back of the ambulance that lift them off the ground and slide into the ambulance and lock in place so you don't roll off as we're driving down the road. Again, we have one that's 13 years old that's functional-ish. Stair chairs. I have about 10 members that weren't born when these were put into service. Two of them are 22 years old, one of them only three years old, so there's the bonus. Life pack monitors, arguably one of the most important pieces of equipment that we have. These will take 12-lead telemetry, see what your heart is doing. It will shock your heart if it is not beating correctly, along with a slew of other things that we can do. Those two that you see that are 15 years old are both out of service. Both of them shut off at any given point, going down the road if we hit too big of the bump. I kid you not. We have, again, two loners from Striker to get us through so that we don't find ourselves in a bad spot where we can't provide electrical therapy to somebody. Lucas devices are what do CPR for us. Instead of doing manual compressions, going down the road, hovering, not seat-belted, trying to float while we're driving to the hospital, instead, we can fit this on the vast majority of our patients and let it do compressions while we provide medications and airway procedures. Two of them are 10 years old, one of them is out of service currently. So what could we do in typical years? We just replace them one by one, not a big deal, right? But we have a lot of equipment that is in bad shape and multiple pieces that are currently out of service. If you look at the compounded growth in the second to last column, that very first piece there, 43.76% growth per year, we just can't afford to keep up with this one-by-one piece replacement, just to even get a start of where we currently are. So here's a picture of just some of our out-of-service equipment, the two life pack monitors sitting on the bottom. If we wanted to buy a brand-new one today of this old version, go for about $39,000 a piece. And then, as we mentioned before, those stair chairs that are 22 years old. All of the batteries that power them are well beyond service life, and we're having to cycle them multiple times a day just to keep the equipment operational, and we also keep two spares in each ambulance, just so that when it fails on a call, we can run back, grab a battery, at least get us through that call, get the patient lifted up and off to the hospital. So what are we asking for in the CIP total? What are we looking at? Two new Lucas devices, three new monitors, two new cots, one new power load, two new stair chairs. That brings everything up with everything that's out of service. While out of service, anything older than five years is out, replaced, and up to new. Here's the creative part that I've done for Administrator Volker. They worked out a plan for us with this five-year service plan, and the savings in the far bottom right over buying outright, piece by piece, is approximately $56,000 if we do this five-year plan. The other bonus is that we get, you'll see a line there called Pro Care. It's a PM, a preventive maintenance service, where they take care of anything that breaks, anything that needs to be serviced, including parts, no questions asked, for five years. And then I would have another five-year plan after this one expires, so that we are covered for a full 10 years on all the equipment, so we can build an actual equipment replacement program for all our EMS equipment. Looking for your questions.
So just to understand, are you talking, phasing these in, you know, like, over the five years? Are you looking at getting all these at once and just paying it off over the five years?
Good question. So the benefit of this program, although we have to pay it over five years, it all shows up... shows up day one.
Okay. My next question was gonna be then, if they're gonna, if you're gonna phase it in, like your last presentation with your.
Bingo.
Are they locking their prices? But it must make me my next question is, if we buy one part this year, one part in three years from now, are they locking the pricing? But you answered my question, so thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks, Joe.
Anyone else?
We do have some built-in coverage for tariffs. I know we had some asks from council to be aware of tariffs, and we did put a little bit of tariff preventative measures in here. We're hoping that the actual number would be slightly less than this, because every month as it goes on, this dollar number is going up by the month. So I have calculated enough to try to get us to January 1st of 2026 to get us through.
You mentioned that you're hoping to extend another five-year plan after this one, and then you'd be able to build this replacement program. Do you anticipate, in general, that this kind of order should last us 10 years? Is that the lifetime that we're kind of expecting to get out of this?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So the expected life for any piece of equipment is anywhere from five to 10 years. If we take really good care of it, 10 years. So hoping that each piece will have a 10-year replacement plan.
I could think some of the electronics and stuff in some of these, you know, they're outdated as soon as they hit the deck half the time, right? They come up with greater, later and greater options, as well as the different hookups and battery, you know, components to.
Absolutely. And that's with these two monitors here, there are version one, where version two and three occurred in the middle there, and then that one, version four. So these are well, well out of date, correct?
Yep.
Chad? If you could go to the slide that showed the two proposals, I think, that had the $56,000, sorry if I missed it.
No, this one's?
Yeah, what's driving the $56,000 savings?
So that would be the difference in that top section, where it says products and cost of equipment, that $470,000. That would be roughly the, if we bought it piece by piece, instead of this five-year plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
They're actually giving you money, giving you financing.
Any other questions?
Thanks again, Tony.
Let me go through the rest of this, and then we're gonna go to finances to address all the person, all the person who asked Vogel's question. Again, just a couple of statistics that you're probably gonna forget as soon as I come out of my mouth, but our general obligation borrowing over time shows that we're, we have about a 6% increase annually, it's 5.92%. This compares to a national annual inflation rate of about 3% over that same period, which, again, just shows the items in which we're purchasing, again, are, their outpace, their cost increases are outpacing even inflation. Just so that everyone understands, there's a couple of things that we're looking at. Not only is the general obligation debt, but also water, sewer, and electric. Those CIP budgets, as long as they stay within a certain margin, they know that they will have the same amount of rate of return, which is what's important in a utility. So both water, sewer, and electric, I should say, including electric, all basically stay within that certain amount. And so when we're doing street projects, we look at that for water and sewer, obviously. And again, with electric, they're looking at any capital, major projects of rebuilds or things like that, that, again, can affect their budget. But again, they know what their range, their comfort range is, and as long as they stay within that, they can expect their operations will allow them to have the rate of return, which has allowed us not to have to increase water rates, sewer rates, or electric rates in quite a while. Remember, the only time that we really increase electric rates is when our cost for electric goes up, and then obviously, we, that number is passed on to you as our consumer. The newly created Stormwater Utility, again, which was started in January of this year, will show a good rate of return in '25 and '26, as we have no capital against those, against that utility. In 2027, we'll have our first capital payment it'll make on the utility for the road reconstruction project, which will happen in 2026. So when 2027 comes, you make your first debt payment, the Stormwater will start to have to pay its portion of the utility of that, of that debt. Now, we anticipate and I had budgeted that in 2028, we'll probably have to look and just find out how much money that we have left over for capital in the future in Stormwater, and we may have to look at revising and updating that, that rate, the Stormwater rate. In 2029, the water utility will need to address one of the biggest issues it'll have, which has to do with PFAS. Again, we've talked about this many times, and those in the utility committee have heard this before. Again, right now, we're looking at about a $15 million investment in two of our wells to get the PFAS under the regulated allotment. Remember, the PFAS level that is allowed now by the EPA is at four parts per trillion. In those two wells, we are at 4.2 parts per trillion and 4.9 parts per trillion. That's how close we are. Now, keep in mind, some communities were at 27 parts per trillion. And prior to the change by the federal government, the EPA, the allowed amount was 17, and then it went down to four. Again, to give you an example, that's like four drops of water in a ocean. That's how much that would equate to. So that being said, again, as long as the EPA continues on the road that it is, we look at 2028 and 2029 to start designing and actually building the additions that we'll need onto those two wells. When that happens, and if we have to borrow several, much of that funds, your water rates will dramatically go up. It is just a, it's a mathematical certainty that this will happen. Now, we are working on getting funding, and I know in the utility committee, Brian has talked to you about this, there's a new word out that they are going to allow us to separate these two wells out as two different projects. And when that happens, we're gonna go for funding for each one of those, and hopefully we get funding for both through that. We've already received some allowance of money through a lawsuit against the major companies which created this man-made chemical, which included DuPont and 3M. So again, between that, we're hoping to get a lot of funding available before we actually have to go into planning stages in 2028. Finally, and last thing, let's go over the finances. What does this mean to you as a taxpayer? So I have this sheet that I gave all of you. It's a part of your packet, it's got all the colored bars to this. Right now, if you look in the second bar, which is shaded blue in mine, it may be a different color, or it may be just a second bar, if it's black and white. In this situation, it kind of shows where we were going with the, our future overall levy, debt on levy. So we were always about 2.5, then we were at 3, and last, last year, we were at 3.3. This coming year, we're also looking to be 3.3. There is abilities to stabilize this through how we set up our debt, okay? So that, again, we're not doing this all the time. Because, again, as goes your debt, goes your, goes your overall taxes. So with the new house coming, and the new firehouse coming on in 2026 borrowing, it'll hit our first payment in 2027, and you see where that goes. That increases the total debt on budget from 3.3 to $4 million. That will continue in '27 and '28. And then if this agree, if it's agreed upon to build and purchase the new park building, your new level is gonna be up to about 4.3. So again, what does that mean on the mill rate? Mill rate, again, is currently 456. You're looking at it going up to about 487, which is about 22, excuse me, 31 cents in 2027, and then again, another 17, 18, 15 cents, actually, in 2029. From there, it should start to level off. Now, I added the third bar in here, when you take into consideration the increased costs on the firehouse, this is where we're going. When you add the additional costs for the 2028, the 2028 and the park building, that's the bottom bar, which is yellow in my sheet. I don't know what color it is in yours. But you're seeing, again, mill rate going from 456, staying at 456 next year, again, assuming there's no increase in operational. 2027 adding about 37 cents or eight cents mill rate versus what we were already planning on, which incorporates about a 1.67% increase. The following year, again, a 1.4% increase. In 2029, with, again, the park building on the levy, you're increasing this about 3.61 and 6.12 versus what we currently have in place. So when I looked at, what is the cost for the average household? Was this gonna cost them more in their city taxes? Which is what your question was, Chad.
Correct.
I took a look at the average house of elected officials. So I had them run all of your house values, and said, okay, so what is, the average, I think, in your house, of your houses is about $317,000. So you take a look at that, if you had a $317,000 house, your taxes in '27 would go up about $25, and 2029 is gonna go up to about $56 more than what we currently have on the books moving forward, and 2030 would go up about $92 if you bought everything, paid for everything, and everything stays as we project the cost to be. So that's what it is. When you look at, in five years from now, there's gonna be a lot, a lot of things could change. And one of the things that I have in here, the assumptions are that things, other things will not change, will not, they will stay the same. Of course, they're not going to. We know we're gonna have more growth. We know that there's 281 houses being built in the next five years in the four subdivisions alone that are already started. There's going to be another two subdivisions that we're currently in the, in the process of looking at. So the growth factor, I think I have on the bottom of that sheet, could be on page two, if you're having it in paper form, averages about 1.79 annual increase. So anytime you see that the increase is gonna be 1.67 or 1.4, that's basically gonna be eaten up, eaten up by the average increase in growth. When we go to 3.61, 6.12% increase, again, 1.79% of that will be eaten up by growth. So again, this is the best we can do at what we see now. I kind of wanna give you the worst-case scenario, and again, a lot of things can happen in five years. Any questions? Yes, Dean?
Steve, I've got one, and you and I have talked about this a little in the past, and that has to do with problems with the existing dam. Weren't there some things that have to be fixed on that eventually? I don't know where they are in the budget or what year, but there are some costs that are gonna be associated with fixing that dam. Roughly, do you remember what they are and when we'll have to address them?
Yeah, this is why I kept Chris up way beyond his normal bedtime.
Yep, I appreciate that. So we have, 2028, we have $200,000 in there for rehab, and that's essentially for the face of the spillway to be replaced, reconstructed. So the wing walls and the head walls of the, of the structure itself are all in good shape, but I have been working with a specialty consultant on the repairs that are needed. We had some scope changes that we had in '26 originally, and we were gonna push it off to '28 to try to get some, pursue some funding for, for that rehab work.
That was my next question.
Yeah. So we're working on that actively, but again, to push it out a little bit further is gonna give us more time to try to secure funding.
Okay. So it's like '28?
'28, correct.
Thanks. Thanks, Steve.
Any other questions? Yes, all the person web.
For, for us less smart people, can you just explain to me, like, you know, you have blue, green, red, yellow on here, like, what, what exactly am I looking at when I?
Yeah, so the first one, the first bar has to do with, when we presented the budget in 2024, 2024 for 2025, what that was considering is going to, where the rate was going to be. Now, you see in there, again, we anticipated our rate was gonna go up, even with, you know, some of these things being already, not in place yet. Then the revised 20 years of fire, taking it from a 10-year borrowing to a 20-year borrowing, that changed some of the numbers. Then the next bar, the green bar, as it would be, would be the increased cost of the firehouse, which is 4.9, again, over the 20 years. The red line, or the pink in mine, probably because my ink was running out, is, again, the increased cost for the firehouse and the increased GEO cost for 2026. And then finally, the yellow one is the increased cost of the firehouse, increased cost for GEO in 2026, the increased GEO for 2028, and the park building. So second line of, of each one of those bars talks about why it's different.
And the, the amounts that you gave for the average homeowner are based on which one of these examples?
So the average, when we're talking at the end, all of these have to do with the average households. You take whatever number, the average, let's just say, again, yours, it was with the 10 of you, it was the average household, household value, not income, was 300 and, I think it's $318,000 was the average value of the homes, of the 10 of you. I think the average home actually in Hartford, I think, is right around 295, high twos.
No, I mean, my point was, you said it was gonna go up like $50 and then $90. Is that based on the yellow bar?
Yeah, so the, the yellow bar on the bottom is all, all in tax title and license. You're talking about an increase of $25.61 in '27, $21.46 in '28 compared to what you were going to pay, $56.93 versus what, again, your last budget showed, and $92.96 compared to what your, again, your last budget showed.
Okay.
Two questions, just, so the first one, just to help me understand the process. We're going to vote to approve this tonight. Does that lock us in? Do we still vote on these individually as they come up?
Yes, no, and indifferent.
Okay.
So tonight, what you're gonna do is, if you approve the CIP budget, you're really only approving the borrowing for the next two years. Then, every time we have a contract for any one of these, you approve that. Now, remember, if it's under budget, it goes unanimous consent, you really don't say anything, you just kind of go, yep, okay. If it goes over that budget, then you, again, vote on it in an open area, in which you can have debate and things like that, okay? And what was the third item, third option? It really doesn't confine you for 2028 borrowing, because that's gonna come in the future. The, also, you will have a vote yet in probably March, in which you'll vote on the actual bond issuance. At that time, there's a public hearing in which you say, we approve a bond issuance of $5.2 million for this, for the, the general obligation borrowing for the 2026, '27 CIP. Then there's, there'd be another one in which you will approve the bonding for the firehouse, $4.9 million for a new firehouse, okay? So there is several steps yet, but what you're doing is at least giving direction to move forward with these items. Now, at the end of the day, it still doesn't mean anything until after you've approved the total budget, because your total budget, your operational budget, which you'll see in October, we'll talk about it in October, and then you vote on it in the first meeting in November. At that time, you are agreeing and approving the total levy. The levy includes your general operations, your library, your taxi, and your debt payment. Now, debt payment, we know what it is, because, again, there is no new debt in 2025 that we're starting to pay in 2026. So we know that's gonna be $3.3 million. We know what that is. The rest of it, the taxi, that's an operational cost, the library, operational cost, and then the operational cost of the rest of the Fund 100. And I kept, I keep saying this, and I apologize for everybody who's been on this board for 400 years, but for the new people, when I talk Fund 100, it's the primary budget for. for most of our operations, not including utilities. Okay? So utilities are its own budgets, they are, their own business in essence. General operations for the general city is under Fund 100. That was lectured by itself, I should be.
So thank you for that. That was question one, which was probably the, the harder one. Second question, when we talked again about those, those dollar increases, is there an assumption for interest rates on this borrowing or does that not impact the numbers?
Great question. There is an assumption. What we do is we work with our financial advisors. Maybe they, they changed names. Anyways, but we work with our financial advisor, has been working with us for 40 years and we, we say, okay, this is how much I'm needed to borrow. What are you currently seeing on the market for these types of municipal bonds? And I think they were estimating at 4.5%. Jeff is somebody who will always overestimate the number and then when he comes back with 4.19, you truly put him up on your shoulders and you march him down Main Street and think he's your god and hero. But anyway, so that's, I would say 4.5% is pretty conservative.
And that's what's in all the way out.
Yeah, so.
So, so that might be conservative too if rates drop.
Yeah, so if you look at this sheet, which is your, your debt schedule, the numbers, if you add them all up across any one of those areas, now I cut this budget off at 32, I could have kept going for the next 10 years after that. But if you add those numbers up, it basically is principal and interest on 4.9 in that first number for the, for the firehouse, but it'll probably be, you know, 5.8 or whatever the deal is with a 4.5% interest rate.
Thank you.
Chad, you're welcome.
Just one thing that I always want to, I just want to mention, I mean, I've not been here for thousands of years, but I've been here since 2013. We've kept a pretty, pretty skinny budget. We've made, we've, you know, when it comes down to what we've done with the levy and moving it up, I want to say, I think the prior mayor will pat himself on the back that we've held it pretty tight. But you know, some of the stuff that we're looking at spending, and I said this a couple of years ago, is one day it's going to come where we're going to need to, we're going to need to expand. We have how many subdivisions going in? How many subdivisions are on, on the breaker? You know, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on and, you know, and part of growth is, is exactly that. And like you said, you guys are looking at, we are looking at the cost and what we're looking at borrowing, but then when you, you, you turn around and you start adding the 200 and some odd homes and so on and so forth in there, it, it will, it will kind of balance out to some extent. We won't be taking these big swallows. And one thing I have noticed if, in my thousand years on the, on the board, was sometimes stuff that's out in the, you know, third, fourth and fifth years of the thing, have a tendency to slide out within departments. So, you know, I, I think the idea of putting this one out on '29 and for the, for the, for the rec center, that may pull in or go out as well. So, but we're not, we're not looking at that for, for, for taking a loan or doing our finances with it. So I just to say, I mean, I know it, there's some, there's some big shocking numbers out here, but there's been several years that we haven't done much at all. A lot of the tax increases have gone because of schools, because if you remember, we're about 35, about what, 45% of the, the tax, the bill. And the schools don't even come and ask us that, we have to approve their budget that raises the taxes and we do it without any explanation. So yeah, that's a plug to the superintendents in the schools that maybe they'll come this year and explain theirs before I approve it. But we've, we, we're at a point, I think in the city that you have to, we have to really consider what we're doing and where we're going and I, we're not going to get any, we're not going to get any smaller.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Mayor?
So you have in front of you.
Oh, sorry, I have.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Justin.
On the, just on the firehouse for a second, like I know we talked about like the fourth bay, like when we're, I'm assuming we're approving this budget, it doesn't impact like our decision about whether to add that fourth bay? This is just about the borrowing? Or if we wanted to add the fourth bay, like do we need to do anything different for this particular vote?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And in, in reality, we're going to still, when, after we get the approved plan or the first look at the final plan for the, and then they'll give us an estimate as far as what they anticipate the cost is going to be, then they go out for bid, right? And we're hoping to go out to bid, I assume it yet in the, in the third, fourth quarter of, of this year. That's exactly what I said, January 1 of 2021. Anyways, so when we go out to bid, then we'll get the final numbers and then we'll, you know, be able to, you know, decide, okay, which direction are we going to go with that situation? So.
So this vote does not impact that decision?
No, not really. Again, because with the situation, the, we, there's a couple of ways in which we can do this. One is you can say, you know, the, the CIP was approved for $4.9 million for that building. And then once we get the, the results back and the bids back, we can decide, do we accept the bid or do we go back to the drawing board and remove some of the stuff to get to where we, we feel comfortable? The other thing you can do is go 5.2, we thought 4.9. Well, can we do something else with the $300,000? If it was up to me, I would say, take the $300,000 out of your fund balance, which is relatively high-end. Your fund balance is, is close to 67%, I think she said last meeting when she presented. That's, that's plenty of money that you could pull out of there to, to, to make this work.
There's always a creative way, right, Steve?
What's that?
There's always creative ways, we always.
There's always creative ways to do this, yes.
Yes.
And you know, and another thing, and I, I don't mean to lecture tonight, but again, with two new board members, I think it's kind of important to kind of catch up if, and that is, there is a lot of times in which we will do this process, the CIP process. And then we go out for bid and the bids come in lower and then, or higher. But if the bid comes in lower, we'll have money left over from that budget. And then at the end of the two-year cycle, which we're coming to the end of the 24 cycle, we then have money left over. Now, under the law, you have to use this funding within two years of the specified time. And so what would happen is any money left over, just like your savings account, automatically becomes a part of the future debts. So in other words, rather than borrowing 5.5, I may only have to borrow 5.4 or 5.3. So all that could yet still happen. And usually when we staff estimates cost, estimates cost, they're usually pretty conservative and we, we normally do come in a little under budget with most of our projects and I, I give a lot of credit to our staff for, for making sure we do that. An example, a good example of that is you just approved a very large amount of pavement maintenance. We did several, several roads in that pavement maintenance. That was all leftover money from borrowed funds in '24.
We were just keeping in mind Dennis Hagie, that's why we were doing that.
Exactly. With my thousand, thousand years being on the, on the board statement, I thought for sure someone would bring up Hagie. But anyways, yeah, so I mean, there, there's a lot of potential here that, that, that numbers could change.
Sure.
Thanks. So in front of you, the discussion and consideration of the 2026, 2030 CIP budgets.
Move to approve as presented.
Have a motion and a second, Jessica?
Motion by Elder Person Curly, seconded by Elder Person Rosniak, approving the 2026, 2030 CIP budget.
Any final discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay. Motion passes. Final item on the agenda is adjournment. A motion, motion by?
I'll second.
And a second. Jessica?
Motion by Elder Person Waldvogel, seconded by Elder Person Wilk, to adjourn at 8:58 PM.
All those in favor, sign by by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay. We are adjourned.